Everyone, I now call this meeting of the Standing Committee on Economic Development and Environment to order. My name is Ron Bonaduce and I am the MLA for Teteau and also the Deputy Chair of this committee. Our first order of business to open the meeting with a prayer. And I will say the prayer. Creator, we ask your blessing and guidance for good health and good thoughts for all the people of the Northwest Territories. We look to guidance, to your guidance, to lead us down the right path as we make decisions for the people. We ask nothing more than the simplest things that life has to offer. Our next item is to review an adoption of the agenda. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On today's agenda is a public hearing on Bill 3 and Act to amend the Public Highways Act. And that is the only item of business, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Hearing no changes to the agenda, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Mr. Johnson has moved adoption of the agenda. The motion is in order. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is carried. Having reviewed and adopted the agenda, are there any declarations of conflicts of Hearing none. Today, the Standing Committee on Economic Development and Environment is holding a public hearing on Bill 3, an Act to amend the Public Highways Act. Bill 3 received second reading in the Legislative Assembly on March 13, 2020, and was referred to this committee for review. Today's meeting is being livestreamed on the Assembly's social media channels. To respect physical distancing requirements, our witnesses will be attending by video conference. I would like to remind all members and witnesses that all comments, questions, and remarks will need to be directed to myself as the chair. Both members and the witness will need to wait to be recognized by the chair before speaking. I will now ask members to introduce themselves for the record. And I'll start on my left. I will now invite the Minister of Infrastructure, the Honorable Diane Archie, to introduce yourself and your staff and to proceed with any opening comments you may have. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and committee members. I'd like to introduce the staff. Today with me is Steve Ludet, who's my Acting Deputy Minister for Department of Infrastructure. I also have on the screen with us is Doc Robert, and he is the Senior Legislative Advisor with the Department of Infrastructure. And with me here is Sherry Jarak, who's the Legislative Counsel with the Department of Justice. Mr. Chair, the Department of Infrastructure is pleased to, that Standing Committee on Economic Development and Environment is considering the bill for proposed amendments to the Public Highways Act. The Public Highways Act is administered by the Department of Infrastructure and governs, amongst other things, the construction, maintenance, access to, and use of highways within the Northwest Territories. The proposed bill was amended, the Public Highways Act, to address the government of the Northwest Territories' liability for loss or damage resulting from a failure to maintain primary highways here in the Northwest Territories. The proposed bill requires the minister to maintain primary highways and provides that the GNWT is liable, with exceptions for loss or damage resulting from a failure to do so. The bill will make it clear that the minister has no duty to maintain roads that are not designated as primary highways under the Public Highways Act. Thank you for your time and your consideration of this bill, Mr. Chair.
Massey, Minister Archie. I guess we can get right into it. Does committee have any general comments or questions on Bill 3? Mr. O'Reilly?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I guess I just want to say that I sat in the 18th Assembly. This was brought forward to committee, and I guess at that point I thought it was a pretty easy.
Thanks, Mr. Clerk. I just want to say that I sat in the last Assembly. This was brought forward. As the intention was to bring this forward in the last Assembly, it didn't happen. I thought it was a pretty easy and simple suggestion for some changes, but I think the more that we've dug into this, the more complicated it gets. So I do have some questions that I want to ask with regard to definitions and interpretations. Some of this comes from a submission that committee received from the city of Yumalife. So I guess my first question is, if I can, Mr. Chair, is whether pullouts and shoulders of primary highways are included within the definition of primary highways? And the reason why that's important is there is a duty established, or would be established through the bill, to maintain highways. So just wondering if pullouts and shoulders are included in what the department would have to maintain. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. O'Reilly. Minister Archie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, that is correct. Pullouts and shoulders are part of the, you know, as infrastructure understands that pullouts is referring to the areas and the sides of many of our primary highways that provide the area for cars or trucks to pull off for emergencies, to rest or to access disposal bins. So these pullouts are usually short extra lanes along our primary highways that are only accessible from the primary highway and that lead directly back onto the primary highway. So they do not have, provide access to any other destination. So, Mr. Chair, that is correct. They are included. Thank you.
Massey, Minister Archie. Mr. O'Reilly?
Thanks. One other question, if I can. So I guess proposed subclause 21.1 brackets 4 states that a primary highway will be, quote, "maintained in a reasonable state of repair," end of quote. And I'm just wondering if the minister can tell us whether there's any kind of standards that exist and that are used by the department in maintaining highways, primary highways here in the Northwest Territories? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Massey, Mr. O'Reilly. Minister Archie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In subsection 21-1 brackets 4 of the bill, there is a reference to maintenance standards for highways. So the infrastructure maintains highways in accordance with the following standards. So the Department of Highways and Maintenance Manual is the standard for the best practices for highway maintenance, road surface repairs, drainage improvement, and operational procedures for construction of winter roads. So these standards were established with the former Department of Transportation way back in 1999, and they were based on best practices for highway maintenance in Alberta, Saskatchewan, B.C., and Alaska. So these guidelines are reviewed and updated regularly based on the changes to best practices. So this manual is intended to assist the regional managers and the highway supervisors in putting in best practices for planning and completing highway maintenance work, also to assist some of the maintenance crews in their work as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Massey, Minister Archie. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In general, I have no issue with the bill. I recognize the duty to mitigate our liability on non-primary highways, but I'm a little confused exactly what we're excluding here. I'd like clarification. Section 22 of the Public Highways Act has a definition of all highways under the control of the commissioner. Then this limitation of liability is primary highways? But can I just get a sense of whether there are any highways that are not primary highways? I get perhaps there's some bush roads that we didn't want to service, or some, you know, private ice roads that we don't want to be liable for, but I'm just trying to get a sense of what else is not included of a definition of a primary highway, but maybe in fact something we maintain presently. Thank you, Madam Chair. Or Mr. Chair.
So it's this?
Massey, Mr. Johnson. Minister Archie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. While we're not aware of highways that are subject to the direction, control, and management of the commissioner, that are not also primary highways, it's important to note that there is also a provision in this proposed bill that clarifies that the expenditure by the minister of public funds on the maintenance of highways other than primary highways does not impose a duty on a minister to maintain those highways. Mr. Chair, I think you're on mute. I couldn't hear a word since I last spoke, sorry.
Sorry. I've been advised that there is a problem with audio quality on our livestream. I apologize for this, and assure members and our witnesses that staff will be reposting the video following this meeting. Massey. Mr. Johnson, did you have further questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Perhaps I could just get a little bit more clarification. I'm just looking to put this in context of, I assume almost every highway the average person drives on is a primary highway, but can I get an example of those? You said there are some highways we do spend public funds on which would not be primary highways. Can I get an example of what those highways are? Are they community access roads? Are they some of the ice roads to the mines? Just what examples are we spending public funds on but not giving ourselves any liability? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and we're not aware of any funds that are spent on any other highways than our primary highways. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Okay, then I think I would encourage the minister and staff to go look back at the standard set out in section 21.1 here and the old Act, section 22, the highways under the control of the commissioner. If there's essentially no difference in all of our highways are primary highways, I think perhaps that amendment could just be made and we could use one standard. I am worried that there is some kind of ice road out there that we, you know, agreed to a contribution agreement with a mine, and it's not a primary highway, and we're going to get into that debate. Another question I would like to ask, Mr. Chair, is that we create a general standard to maintain our highways. You said that's in compliance with standards. I agree with that. But then we go down to section, sorry, 21.1 sub 9, and there's no action shall be brought, and a list of several things that we don't have to maintain. And in reviewing this, it seems it's very clear. It's pulled from the Alberta and Yukon legislation. However, in section 9 sub A, it goes, we don't have to maintain essentially pavement, comma, markings. In both of those pieces of legislation, it's actually pavement markings. So I would encourage the drafter to go look and remove the comma after pavement, because it's one thing to say we're not going to maintain the guardrails and traffic control devices and ancillary kind of things to a highway, but to say we're going to not maintain the pavement really seems counterintuitive to our obligation to maintain highways. So if I could get a comment from the minister, I believe that is an error. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I've got Sherry here with me, who's the drafter from the Department of Justice, and we're just, we will take that under advisement and have a look at it.
All right, thank you, Minister Archie. Any further comments, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess also looking at 9 sub A, I get the presence or absence, you know, if we decide not to build a guardrail, we don't want to be in a court case about whether it should have existed. The word insufficiency causes me a little bit more concern, and I think especially in regards to traffic control device, can I just get some clarification from the department? Say if a stop sign is knocked down, and then we get a call that it needs to be repaired, and we don't repair it, and then someone drives through a non-existent stop sign, to me that would be an insufficient traffic control device, and we're now saying we should not be liable for that. I think that's probably pushing, limiting our liability a little too far. Can I get the minister to comment on the inclusion of traffic control device and insufficiency in that list? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Minister Archie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So infrastructure, just to go back, infrastructure is in a view that removing the words "or insufficiency of" would significantly broaden and increase the minister's exposure to actions in liability. So this provision in wording "or insufficiency of" is consistent with similar legislation that's in the Yukon and Alberta as well. So the wording is intended to protect the minister, myself, from the excessive liability. So for example, Mr. Chair, if a light guide rail is erected along one of our primary highways and that the guide rail is hit by a transportation truck, and if the rail falls off to prevent that transportation truck from going off the road and sustaining damages, it could be argued that the rail was insufficient. However, the guide rail that was erected by infrastructure to prevent trucks of that size from going off the road, such as the words "or insufficiency of," in proposed subsection 21.1 bracket A, would clarify that the minister cannot be held liable for the insufficiency of the guide rail. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to add, if I can, Mr. Chair, that without this wording, infrastructure would have to prepare for worst-case scenarios every time a wall, a fence, a guide rail is erected on primary highway, which we consider unreasonable. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Massey, Minister Archie. Mr. Johnson, anything further?
I recognize that, and that's using the word insufficiency perhaps in a design standard. You know, if we design it insufficient for a truck, then I get that, but perhaps can I ask the department to go look at how other jurisdictions deal with traffic control devices? I presume the above standards you referenced give us some obligation to maintain our stop signs, stoplights, very, you know, obvious infrastructure that would be linked to an accident? And to say that we don't have a duty to repair insufficient traffic control devices seems to be extending the liability a little too far. I get the other things on the list. I'm willing to leave them in there. I'm willing to leave the word insufficiency in there, but I believe the traffic control device is probably pushing it. So if I could just get the department to perhaps provide committee a written response to that, or, thank you.
Massey, Mr. Johnson. Minister Archie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Mr. Chair, we can provide the member with a written response. Thank you.
Minister Archie. Mr. O'Reilly?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I want to go back to the issue of the, thanks, Mr. Chair. I want to go back to the issue of what the highway standards are. I think the minister mentioned that there's a Department of Highways Maintenance Manual. When I just went on the Department of Infrastructure website, I can't find that manual. Is it a public document? And if not, will the minister commit to actually making this available so that the expectations around maintenance are actually, our citizens will actually, no one understand what the expectations are around highway maintenance? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Massey, Mr. O'Reilly. Minister Archie?
I didn't say. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the document the members referring to is an internal document. However, the national guidelines from the Transportation Association of Canada are also used by infrastructure for highway maintenance, construction, and safety measures. So the signage, for example. The TAC guidelines are based on high-volume roads, and infrastructure modifies the guidelines to meet the Northwest Territories' requirements for low-volume roads. So these guidelines are updated regularly by TAC. Also, the guidelines for the Safe Ice Construction booklet provides guidance to infrastructure staff and contractors involved in the construction, the maintenance of winter roads, ice roads, ice bridges. And it outlines best practices and procedures intended to increase the safety of those working on winter roads or, and ice surfaces. So these guidelines were established by infrastructure and are reviewed regularly. Regular. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Massey, Minister Archie. Mr. O'Reilly?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. That's great. I don't think you answered my question, though. How is the public supposed to know what the maintenance standards are for any highway if none of this is public? You say that the maintenance manual is an internal document. Is there a problem in making it public so that, like, how does the, is the public supposed to know what the maintenance standards are for any highway? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Massey. Minister Archie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, this is something that we can review. I hear the members concerned about it not being public, but we can, we can have a look at the manual and see if there's value to make it public. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Massey, Minister Archie. Anything further, Kevin?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I appreciate that commitment from the minister. I will be looking for that information to be made public so that the trucking industry, the public, will know what the maintenance standards are. But I guess mine is a bit broader question. I'm trying to understand what problem this bill is trying to fix. And I'd like to know how many lawsuits GNWT has had raised against it as a result of liability issues around primary highways? How many lawsuits have we faced in the last five years? And have we had to pay out, and what's been the cost of those payouts? And I'm sorry that the minister is getting this right at the public hearing, but I guess I'm trying to understand what problem this is supposed to be fixing, and if indeed there is a problem. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Massey, Mr. O'Reilly. Minister Archie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the bill is intended to bring clarity to the public regarding how and when the GNWT is liable for incidents occurring on highways within its control. So specifically, the highways that are designated under the Highway Designation and Classification Regulations. So the clarity will result in increased predictability for litigants, insurers, and highway authorities. So any of the, the main concern for this is the ice roads. That's, that's the worry of the department, is the liability on ice roads. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Massey, Minister Archie. Mr. O'Reilly?
Thanks, Ms. Chair. I don't think I got a response to my question. And I understand the minister's probably looking at her briefing notes, which is great, but I'm trying to understand if this is actually fixing a problem. How many, and if the minister doesn't have the information available to her now, can I have somebody say, have we had a number of lawsuits over the last five years that have caused the department to bring forward this legislation? Are there, you know, have we had significant court settlements that we've had to pay out that are bringing this to the forefront now? Can the minister commit to provide this information to the committee at a future date? I'm trying to understand if this is, if there's a problem that this is specifically trying to address right now. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Massey, Mr. O'Reilly. Minister Archie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I do want to make note that there has been no lawsuits. However, Mr. Chair, if I can ask my Acting Deputy Minister, Steve Ludet, to explain a little further, given he's got a little bit more time in this department than me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Massey, Minister Archie. You got the floor. Deputy Minister Ludet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To answer the question, obviously, this is something that we, the taxpayer cannot be responsible, the government cannot be responsible for roads that aren't built to our standards. So it is, it is an issue we are addressing, and as the minister noted, we haven't had any lawsuits to this, for this situation, but it is, it is a proactive movement. It's important that we, that we identify that liability, and we don't, you know, have the taxpayer, we have to absolve the taxpayer of these liabilities of which we don't control these roads. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Massey, Mr. Ludet. Anything further, Mr. O'Reilly?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to determine is what is the right balance here between establishing a duty for our government to maintain highways to certain standards? And we don't want people suing us frivolously, but the way that the bill has been drafted, it basically prevents anybody from suing GNWT, no matter how lousy the roads are, quite frankly. And I'm not sure that's the right kind of balance that we want to achieve, or is it in the interest of perhaps the trucking industry or residents? What is that balance? Maybe I can get the minister to comment on that. Thanks.
Chair? Massey, Mr. O'Reilly. Minister Archie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, we do have that obligation to, to look after all our primary highways. This does not take away from that responsibility. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Massey, Minister Archie. Anything further, Mr. O'Reilly?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure that that really answered my question, but, and I know the minister's new to the portfolio, but the way this has been drafted is in a way that basically prevents anybody from suing GNWT, no matter what the condition of a road essentially is. And then, but our government has a duty to maintain roads to standards that are not even known to the public, because the manual is not a public document. It just doesn't seem quite fair to me that government's got a duty to maintain to a certain degree, but if anybody tries to sue the government because they have an accident on the highway, they're not allowed to sue. It just doesn't seem quite right. It just doesn't seem quite right to me. So I've got some difficulty with that. One last thing that I want to point out, Mr. Chairs, while we've been chatting, the guidelines for safe ice construction that the minister mentioned is on the department's website. That's great. But the manual isn't, and I would urge that the manual be posted, but just getting back, I just don't know what the right balance is, and I'm trying to make my mind up as a legislator, and I haven't been helped very much by the conversation so far. Thanks, Mr. Chair. And that's more.
Let's see, Mr. O'Reilly, Minister Archie, I'll give you a chance to have a reply or comment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask my acting deputy minister, Steve Luedit, to explain a little bit further on the rationale for this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Luedit?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This bill does not in any way absolve the Governor of the Territories of liability on our, on our primary highways. If there's an accident and then our roads contributed to that, there is a liability attached to that. This is, this is strictly for, if somebody is to push off a private road without our awareness, if, you know, on, for example, if somebody were to build, go with a plow in the front of their pickup truck and build a road, and there's an accident, that we are, a road that we are unaware of, that's not part of our highway system, we cannot be held liable for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. Luedit, anything further, Mr. O'Reilly?
Thanks. I want to, I appreciate the remarks of the deputy minister, but that's not what the bill says. The bill specifically says that default under this provision of the bill, it provides that it did not have actual or constructive notice of the disrepair. Sorry, I'm going to try to find, I'd like to get the assistance of the law clerk if I can, because I'm trying to find the specific provision in here, but as I understand this, the way the bill has been drafted, there is a bar for anyone suing GNWT for anything on a, on a public highway. And... Okay. So the scope of the, the bill is that it would, so 21.1 brackets 1, the minister has a duty to maintain a primary highway. But even if the highway is, has things like, if there's presence or absence or insufficiency of any wall, fence, guide rail, railing, curb, pavement, markings, traffic control device, illumination device, or barrier, no matter what condition those are in, somebody cannot sue GNWT. So whether it's an ice road or not, if it's a, if it's a primary highway, no matter what standard it's kept to, quite frankly, nobody can sue GNWT. A private ice road is something separate. It's not even designated as a primary highway by GNWT and the regulations. So already, well, I guess the way that it would, would not be covered by this, but for the highways that are covered, you can't sue for any damages that are related to the presence or absence or insufficiency of a whole list of things. So I'm not sure that the example provided by the deputy minister really helps me understand why we're doing this. And that's, I guess, more of a comment. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. O'Reilly, Minister Archie, do you have any response to comments? Let's see.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask Jacques Roberts to provide a little bit more detail on the answer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman? The, at 21.1 sub 4, the minister shall ensure that a primary highway is maintained in a reasonable state of repair for the passage of cars and trucks. So that's the general provision under the proposed bill. So subsection 21.19 limits the liability to certain items, and the member has read them. However, this does not cover any kind of argument or liability that could be brought. This is a restrictive liability clause, and essentially, the argument could be made that the minister did not maintain the roads in a reasonable state of repair. So there is still liability carried, as the minister said, and the limitations are exceptions. I understand the member finds them fairly broad, but they're not overreaching, and as was said by the deputy minister and the minister, again, the GNWT is not absolved from its responsibility to maintain the highways in a reasonable state of repair. That would conclude my response, Mr. Chairman.
Let's see, Mr. Roberts. Mr. O'Reilly, do you have anything further?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I guess the limitations here seem to be very, very broad and designed in a way to prevent almost anybody from suing GNWT for the condition of a highway, quite frankly. I guess I would probably be more comfortable with some kind of an approach that would say something like, if GNWT has maintained a highway to the standard required in the Highway Maintenance Manual or national standards, that would be a complete defense against a lawsuit. But to basically prevent anybody from bringing forward a lawsuit because there's presence or absence or insufficiency of a whole list of things here, basically any kind of condition to of a highway, just seems to tip the balance in favor of the government and doesn't really, you know, if, if GNWT's not maintaining a highway because it wasn't designed properly through some oversight or negligence, or if, you know, a guardrail went down and the department was reminded five times to go and fix it and they never did, this would seem to prevent somebody from suing GNWT. And I'm just not sure that that's the right kind of approach here. I just think it tips it so far in favor of the government so as to prevent anybody from suing us, that it's just overreach. So I'm just trying to understand why another approach wouldn't have been adopted to say that, you know, if we maintain a highway to the standards required, that would serve as a, as a defense for anybody suing us? Was that kind of approach considered? Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. O'Reilly, Minister Archie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the actual, the actual notice means that the GNWT knew or knew of the despair of a primary highway, so constructive notice means that the GNWT should have known of the despair of a primary highway, given various facts and circumstances. So, and what's an example of an actual or constructive notice in this context? The actual notice may include that infrastructure has completed inspection of the primary highway and saw that it was in a state of despair, or perhaps a letter was sent by a concerned member to the public, or even to an employee of infrastructure, advising them of the state of the highway. However, I do want to add that we do, we do have the liability and negligence for any of that that are on the highway. So we're not taken away from that. We do have the liability. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Minister Archie, anything further, Mr. O'Reilly?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I'm going to ask for the advice of the law clerk if I can. I see where clause 8 does state that there is some mention of a constructive notice in the bill itself, and I'm just wondering how that plays into the issue of liability. I'm trying to understand this, and I'm not a lawyer. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Ms. Minister O'Reilly, Ms. Allison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I take it the member is referring to paragraph 8, which deals, the marginal notice default not imputed, says default under this section shall not be imputed to the government of the Northwest Territories if the government provides that it did not have actual or constructive notice of the disrepair of the highway, or that it took reasonable means to prevent the disrepair or warn of the hazard. So the first part of that requires that the government actually know, or that it should know. Constructive notice is really a legal concept that, where, you know, the constellation of facts establishes that even if it didn't know, it should have known, based on all the information that round, or based on the facts as they are. So either to be found liable under this section, the government can defend by saying, well, we didn't know, or didn't have constructive notice, or we took reasonable means to prevent the disrepair or to warn of a hazard. So if they know, they're aware that there's an issue, they did their best, acted reasonably to prevent the disrepair, or tried to warn of the hazard, perhaps say, in the circumstances where the hazard couldn't be immediately addressed, but warning was put, was made available to the public to try and prevent that, an accident, I would say.
Let's see, Ms. Holland, Mr. O'Reilly?
Sorry, at the risk of going on way too long, I'm fine with that, as providing some sort of standard for care of the highways, but the next section limiting it, I'm not okay with that. That just prevents anybody from suing GNWT, no matter how bad a highway is, quite frankly. And I'm not a lawyer, but I just find it very difficult to live with this limitation set out in sub-paragraph 9, and that's more of a comment, so, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Let's see, Mr. O'Reilly, Minister Archie, give you a chance to, any comments on that one?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, a judge will determine, given the facts of the circumstances, whether or not that the GNWT had active or constructive notice of this. Thank you.
Let's see, Minister Archie, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In response to what I'm looking for the minister to follow up in regards to traffic device, this, the section we're talking about right now was, exists in multiple pieces of legislation, but if you look at section 38 of the Public Highways Development Act in Alberta, we have the exact same section about notice, and we have pretty much the exact same section limiting, you know, all of those ancillary things, minus we added a comma between pavement and markings, which I am looking for correction on. But in that act, in between, there's an entire section about traffic control devices and how that notice should be given. So that is essentially what I'm looking to be added, is 38 sub 6 of Alberta's Public Highways Development Act, which gets around this issue of if someone else knocks down a stop sign and we know about it and we refuse to fix it, we should be liable. So that is what I'm looking for the minister to come back and write in. Thank you, Mr.
Let's see, Mr. Johnson, Minister Archie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, chatting with the mute on here. This is something that we would have to look at. I mean, we've got Sherry here with us who's drafting some of the work, so I look to her, and we will look at the section 38 bracket 6 of the Alberta legislation and have a look at that as well. Thank you.
Let's see, Minister Archie, does committee have any further questions? I'd like to thank the minister and her officials for joining us today. Minister Archie, do you have any closing comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, committee members and staff, and I thank you for your time today to be able to allow us to come and speak to this bill. Thank you.
Let's see, Minister Archie, this concludes this portion of our meeting. Okay. Can I get a motion to go on camera? Mr. O'Reilly?